This conference will now be recorded.
Call a meeting in order. Would everyone please join me on the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. First order of business will be approval of the agenda. Is there any changes, Bruce?
Mr. Chairman, at eight fifteen, originally there was scheduled to be an executive session. After some back and forth, it's not going to be needed today. I would point out, too, some things are going to look familiar. On page two, the final plat, plat twenty-four, twenty-four sixty is one you've seen before. We're going to present it again today just to make sure that it's clear that the final plat was approved. Reddit did some research and the preliminary plat was approved in the minutes, but there's not mention of the final. This is the one where they had to vacate the section line, so kind of went back and forth a little bit between planning this only in county commission. And then finally, at nine forty-five, you're going to be asked again if you approve the agenda, revisit the variance request that you had at your last meeting from down here, beginning of Boulder Canyon regarding the construction of the storage unit. The gentleman here, the applicant, what was present that day was out in the hallway and didn't come in and didn't get his opportunity to speak. So with the chairman's permission, we're going to give him an opportunity for review on that. Other than that, there are no changes. Thank you.
On the variance one, that was my fault for jumping ahead of the scheduled time. So I take full responsibility for that. Well, let him have his so-called day in court, I guess.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Okay, motion in second for approval of the amended agenda. All those in favor of the motion must say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Do we have any conflicts?
None here.
Okay. We need approval of the regular minutes and the board of adjustment minutes from July twenty-third. I'm going to approve it. Second. Okay, a motion in second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The bills. Auditor's account with the treasure. Bruce.
Right, this is as of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Total amount of deposits in the bank says thirty-five million, five hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and thirty-one cents. Included in that total is the CDs for five million, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and seven cents. Bank balance, twenty-one million, three hundred and two dol- two hundred and three hundred and two thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and twelve cents. U.S. bank balance, seven million, three hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. Money market, one million, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-three cents. Total amount of actual cash is one thousand, three hundred and fifty. Total amount of checks and drafts and treasures possession not exceeding three days is seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, seventy-eight cents. Cash, five thousand, five hun- five thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. Petty cash, seven thousand, two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Total amount is thirty-five million, six hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-four cents.
Motion to approve the auditor's account with the treasure.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the auditor's account with the treasure. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Now let's do bills. I've had my questions answered.
I have no questions.
Who can pay the bills?
Second.
We have a motion in a second for approval of the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Personnel, Brenda.
Um, we have two new hires. These are emergency hires. They all started on seven twenty, they both started on July twenty-ninth. Ashley Jobe has a correction officer, one, grade one, base pay at twenty-two ninety-three, full-time permanent employee. And Daniel McNeese, correction officer, one, grade one, base pay at twenty-two ninety-three, also a full-time permanent employee, both effective seven twenty-nine.
Did we lose two of them right away and you had to replace them or?
We did, we were three down going into the rally. They had a very small opportunity to try to catch up, so.
Okay.
I appreciate the board's indulgence. It helps us a lot.
What did they find?
I'm sorry.
What kind did they find that they were?
The two that we hired.
Well, there's three, three people that didn't live in this town. Well, these.
So one is in Black Hawk in Mecklenburg, and the other one is in Service.
Service? Well, I know all the kinds are short space.
No, it's this one.
They have other.
I make a motion to approve the new hires. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the new hire. Any, any further discussion seen then? All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And the rest of these are step raises. I have three in the sheriff's office and then one in the auditor's office. Andrew Nelson, going to a correction officer, two, grade three, base pay at twenty-five thirty-four, full-time permanent employee, effective on eight eleven. Troy Thompson, correction officer, two, grade two, base pay at twenty-four eighty-four, full-time permanent employee, effective eight eleven. Gabriel Hoffman, correction officer, two, grade two, base pay at twenty-four eighty-four, also a full-time permanent employee, effective eight eleven. And Krista Schroeder, going to a county employee, two, grade two, base pay at twenty-three twenty-five, also effective eight eleven.
Okay, unless anyone wants to segregate one for some reason, we can handle them all in one.
We move to approve the four necessary step raises.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the step raises. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Anything else, Brenda?
That's all I have for you.
Any travel requests?
I have none.
All right, we're down to resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine. A resolution setting the number of off-sale liquor license and the fee schedule.
This is the annual liquor license resolution setting the price for on-sale liquor licenses. Those that are close to spirit, closer to spirit fish are fifteen hundred dollars. Those closer to lead, deadwood and whitewood are twelve hundred dollars. Our off-sale dealer license is four hundred dollars. We still have a few, I think we have, so we have three of those available. New would be twenty-seven thousand. And then retail, on-off sale wine licenses, those are unlimited, that's at five hundred. And the current ones that we have now in Lawrence County are listed also in this resolution. I state a motion to approve.
Motion moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval and further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right. Automatic supplement, Brenda.
Okay.
Yes, okay, so this is, if you remember, we did the FireWise up at the Public Safety and Services Center. And then we were eligible to apply for the FireWise grant. We have received the money back. This was not something that I was able to budget for last year because we didn't know we were going to do it until later on in the year. So it'd need to automatically supplement the eighteen thousand, nine hundred dollars back into that budget to get budget authorities to spend that money.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion second for approval and further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. Declare surplus for destruction, multiple cubicle panels.
Okay.
What's a cubicle panel, sir?
So I'll just kind of give a brief synopsis of what happened here is when we received all of the furniture from the Department of Revenue when they closed that office. We took the, all of that furniture, Thompson and Sons, moved it up here. We've got it in storage, just waiting for the facility to open. We have recently found out that we got about, I don't know how many, whole storage cubicle full of these panels. That we don't need. And so we were just asking permission to declare it surplus and so we can destroy them. And then get them out of our storage unit.
Can't we donate them someplace?
Uh, there's a process with the state, but they were donated to us because nobody else wanted them. And so while we search them good, I'm not confident that we could find somebody other than.
Okay, I'll make a motion to surplus these to either donate or destroy them.
Okay.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to. Do they're surplus or don't, or destroy us?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Juvenile diversion grant.
Lexi's here.
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, I just have our G A J R I form that needs to be submitted to the state by the end of August. This is the same form that we submit every year that just shows the number of successful diversions that were completed in Lawrence County, or for youth in Lawrence County between July one of twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. This, in the past, it was a reimbursement rate of two hundred and fifty dollars per youth maximum. That has since been increased to seven hundred and fifty dollars per child. Now that amount, if it is not prorated, would result in about fifty-four thousand dollars. I have eighty-two successful completions, however, several of them were eighteen at the time of the offense, and so we don't get reimbursed for those kids. So I'm just asking that if you guys are willing to go ahead and sign up on this so that we can submit for reimbursement. Go ahead and do that.
Brenda.
Um, just in the past, if you do choose to do a motion, we've also designated that when this, we do receive the funds, that it goes back to teen court as a recipient. We'll do a supplement when we get the money and then the funds would go back to teen court if you so choose to make that part of your motion.
What's your play?
I can't make a motion if I can remember the entire motion. So I'll move it the way you authorized the term and the sign the juvenile felony report and to divert the money back to teen court if we do get reimbursed for it.
Oh, second.
Well done. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval.
There's been a couple more questions for Lexi. These are very impressive success rates. Are these, is that typical or?
Yes.
And how is success defined?
I'll keep it. Um, success is defined by successful completion of the program initially, and then we go back and we look going six months back to see whether or not a youth has recidivated, and then we go back one year. That is not included for this. This is just for the purpose of having completed the program initially. I can tell you that in the last five years, we have not had a success rate that's dropped below ninety-two percent for successful completions. And then beyond that with our recidivism rates, they have not dropped below, or excuse me, I shouldn't say drop below, but we have not had more than ten percent recidivate within six months to a year of completion of the program.
That's fantastic.
That's good.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you for your hard work.
You too.
Very worthwhile.
Yeah, just go ahead and CC me. Do you want the whole?
Yeah, McPherson auction, pulled Edward Knight, used the parking ramp, twenty-second, twenty-third and twenty-fourth.
Chairman, if I may, I think Kevin is here too as well. I can preface it, you've seen this and heard this before. They're requesting permission to use the parking ramp on that, essentially that Thursday and Friday, twenty-fourth is Saturday. We do have some workers here at that day as well. And then traditionally, what the county employees do is park at the top level of the parking ramp. It's worked out pretty well. I think Kevin would also, well, what usually happens is folks start to roll in on Wednesday afternoon sometimes. So we don't necessarily clear out the ramp on Wednesday, but if people go to lunch and come back in the afternoon, they might find a classic car in their parking spot. Is that fair?
That's possible, yes.
So that's, that's typical for any day. We, we are leaving the afternoon and come back, but it's more likely to happen on that Wednesday. So we'll be looking for authorization to allow McPhersons to use the parking ramp those days for their full day of nights.
Any approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion as second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
County employee health care. Barb is here too. I just made a note of that. Mr. Chairman, you'll probably hear more about that coming forward, but obviously county commissioners are also invited to participate in that.
Yeah, we scheduled that for October tenth this year, a little bit earlier, but it's going to be the same. Hopefully we have an Aflac representative there as well. Employees can get the flu shot and blood work done.
Okay. And also we've got another here, reminder of the county convention, the seventeenth and eighteenth of September, if anyone's connected to him.
Mr. Chairman, so far Commissioner Jennings has indicated interest. I need to submit that for approval for payment at your next meeting in order to get it in by the deadline. So please let me know by today.
Is there a reason we couldn't do it today?
Uh, it hasn't been prepared in the bill form, so I need to submit it. Yeah. So if no one else is interested, I will submit it with Commissioner Jennings. It's in Rapid City.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that finishes up miscellaneous. It is eight fifteen, Sheriff Dean. Good morning, sir.
Thank you. All I have for you at this time is just some information. The sheriff's office is in full training mode with regards to moving into the new facility. So all of our policies, as would apply for the new facility and running it, have been written. All of our SOPs have also been completed with the exception of the fire exec, evacuation plan that we still need to focus on in the coming weeks, most likely with our local fire department, so we understand exactly what the process will be from them. What this looks like for our folks is most all of the corrections officers will have to go through training to acquire three different credentials in order to work at the new facility. And everybody on the sheriff's office will have to go through that first level. So it's a, it's a process, process of about four tests with hundred percent passing on the first three and then normal passing score on the fourth. So that's what I have.
Completion date for the Public Safety and Service Center, is that changing?
It's a great question. We are, we are looking at that.
More to come.
More to come. Yeah. I can tell you that, in fact, just before I spoke here a minute ago, we were reviewing text messages with RCS and coming, trying to come to a conclusion of the exact date that it will be ready. And I wouldn't want to speak out of turn, so we're still working through it, and that's why I appreciate your patience on that.
Okay. Well, I think, yeah, also, on, on, we're, start our conversation on the future use of the existing building. And I'll just start it off by what my thoughts on it are. My thoughts would be to seal off the upper level of the GLS, get rid of, send in any sewer, water up or down, just seal that off and utilize that upstairs for records, evidence, that type of stuff, cold storage. And then the bottom, the offices, I would envision possibly moving one of the departments or more out of the basement here because they're kind of crowded in there to utilize office space over here. So what's your thoughts, Commissioner Plante?
Don't you still need a holding cellar, too, over there for court appearances and things?
That's correct. Well, it will be a very small footprint for housing inmates over the lunch hour when they're in jury trials and such. Tim and I have been having those discussions to figure out which is going to offer the greatest utility without disrupting anybody that would end up having office space over there.
Mr. Chairman, in anticipation of this discussion, several of us got together to include the sheriff, Greg and Tim. I think Brenda was there and I sat in as well. And it might be a good idea because there's some detail involved here. If you were to point, I need to have more meetings and so forth, but a commissioner or two to a board and meet with some of the staff members to sort of put a plan together and kind of hear what some of the concerns are and some of the thoughts and then coming back to report.
I will sit on that. Say who else?
I'll sit on that.
I will. Just want to have a witness.
Your choice.
I don't care.
Well, if both you gentlemen want to serve on it, I'll recuse myself from sitting on it. I have an interest in it, but.
I'm fine stepping down. You've had more time here, so.
Well, no, it's, that's, I've already voiced my concerns. What type of, how big of a footprint are you anticipating and would it be on the lower level?
It would predominantly be on the lower level. It's a very small footprint, unfortunately, because of the design of the building, there's really no way to position us in the building's current configuration in such a way so as to avoid marching inmates through people's office spaces. So that's really, needs to be the focus moving forward, I would say twofold. How do we get the, the greatest utility out of the building without disrupting others in it? And the second is, how do we get it clean? That is a plan, this, this is absolutely not a slight on Tim or his staff. They've done a tremendous job against a mountain of effort. But that building has had nasty water and nasty other things flowing through it for an awful long time. And you say, hey, before we try to house people over there again.
Does that make sense to everybody? With the GL up on the top floor, inmates periodically will stuff up the toilets and so forth. And so gravity takes over and what comes up, what wants to come down, and it goes down through the offices historically. And I think Tim and his crew have put different outlets in so that the water can be diverted in more convenient spots, right? But that water has historically come in, in detectives' rooms, in the hallways, wherever for forty-five plus years. I think that's what the sheriff was referring to.
My hope, Chairman, is that the sheriff's need can be limited to the bottom floor as much as possible with a couple of holding cells that we have down there. There might be some small alterations that need to take place, but that's my hope.
Chair, my only thought on this is if on a timeline, I'm assuming this hasn't been built into any budget, that we need to make some changes over there. And as we move forward towards approving our budget, we probably need to be thinking about putting that into the budget somehow. So we don't get to January first, need to make some changes and not have a money budget for it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, in so much as our needs, we don't need any, there's no expense for what we need moving forward until major alterations are made to the building. But some might, for now, we're fine.
Okay, that was interesting, it was on the road. Yeah, I didn't anticipate any of that. I guess we, we have that ban to transport prisoners tonight. I thought we'd be utilizing that rather than create any more over here.
We're only looking for, you know, fulfilling that need over, towards lunch hour. That's it.
Okay, any further discussion on this?
Should we have a motion to find those people?
Would you do that? Need a.
Well, make a motion to what Bruce just whispered. To appoint a committee to look at the, what to do with that building.
And who would you like out?
It sounds like it's going to be you and Commissioner Sleep and whomever else is deemed appropriate.
I would suggest Sheriff Tim Gray, and I can tag along. Brenda probably, I bet she'd opt out on that one. We're breaking up the band.
I'll second that.
I can stay on.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, so everyone understand.
Who's going to play the drums?
Who else on? You all saw it. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Did you second it, Jim?
Pardon me? I rejected.
Leading to me.
Commissioner Jennings did. That's it, sir?
That's what I have, sir.
All right, thank you. Is Mr. Gray here? Your turn, sir.
Good morning.
You have a floor.
Well, to start with, we have Celerity Internet wanting to expand the fiber optic service to the west side of Spearfish. I have these, I did request that they did all of these, they have five roads that they, they submitted applications for. I wanted them to do them all separately so that if we had an issue on each road, we would be able to address it. I'll leave it up to you guys. If you want to go through them one by one, or if you just want to address them all at once, I think that would be fine. Each one of them does have a signature sheet.
As far as your presentation on it, why don't you just do it as a whole?
Okay.
Let's send any one of the checks to that.
Uh, they, they're wanting to go install fiber optic on Home State, Bear Ridge, Red Hill Road, Red Hill Place and Crow Creek Road. I did speak with them as far as their application goes. They did put a thirty inch depth. I told them that that wasn't adequate. It didn't meet our ordinance. And I did make sure that they knew that there would be a condition on the application that they would have to meet the thirty-six inch minimum depth that we require. They agreed to that. They also agreed to all the other ones, bore pits outside of the right of way, at the outer edge of the right of way, and all pedestals will be at the outer edge of the right of way. No open trenching will be allowed at the edge of the road or at road crosses. We do have that. I also did get them to supply their, the contractor supplied their estimated cost if we would like to, if we'd like to pursue the bond.
They're gonna plow it, John?
They're gonna plow for the most part, isn't it? They're very confident. They've been doing it in Wyoming. They thought that they could, they've been having good luck with it, so I think.
There's a lot of limestone up there.
For sure, yeah. And I think they'll have good luck with some of it, but I think they're gonna run into submissions as well. I think they'll have better luck than they did on, you know, Maitland and Christiansen Drive. I mean, they, they had to do a lot of, a lot of boring, hot holes and boring. So their plan is to plow, but they do have the accommodations for boring and, and open trenching. It's just a matter of whether we want to pursue the bond or not. They, they're not gonna be working in the road. I mean, they got a lot of room in the right of way in most of these areas. I'm gonna leave that up to you guys if you want to. I, I don't need a bond myself. I'm confident. We've had good luck working with this company in the past, so.
What's the motion to follow recommendation, Highway Superintendent?
There's prices to, prices of bottom of law of those, are they to be paid by the county?
The what now?
I think a $18,000 deal is about to be paid by them or the county.
Well, if we, if we wanted to pursue the bond, this is the, I think our ordinance asks for a hundred percent of the value of the utility in the right of way. And that is four hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety combined of the five roads they wanted. So if we want to implement the bond, that would be the amount total, or I guess we could do it in any fashion within that. I don't think we really have a set amount. It's just up to one hundred percent of the construction cost.
Commissioner Sleep, did you second that motion?
Commissioner.
No, I didn't.
He's elected.
Okay, well, I should have declared it.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to talk about a little more.
Yeah, well, I hadn't declared that it had been a motion in a second yet, so I just wanted to clear that up. Further discussion?
Yeah, we were with them for a while and that, but we had to change because of the topography and that, so we're with a different company now. So I'm not so sure that we want to get too much tied up with them. Maybe, maybe you don't want to keep them, you know? And you might too.
You're, you're referring to these numbers here?
Yeah, the numbers that they have down there.
That's their estimates, what it costs them to put it in.
As I understand.
They pay that, and if they just stay there for a little while, like, that's fine. They don't, being bigger costs or different costs for another company. Do you know what I mean?
But I'm, but I understand this doesn't cost us anything.
Okay.
But this, this, these values were in case we wanted to have them carry a bond to cover their expenses for putting it in.
Okay, Bruce?
Richard, are you concerned about their ability to co-locate with others? I think that somebody else put a utility in and you're wondering if this new outfit is gonna stay or they're creating a trench that won't be used? Is that what your concern is?
Now, because we were with them for a while, I know the gentleman, but we switched to a different outfit.
But they're, they're gonna be investing quite a bit of money in this, so I suspect they'll be sticking around, right?
I don't have an answer for that. I.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, they also got a grant from the state to cover most of these costs to put in fiber optic.
That is correct.
But my only concern is, is that I don't think we should be picking and choosing who we require the bond from. I think if we're gonna do the bond, we should do the bond on all of them, or none of them.
I was just going with the discretion of the highway superintendent, depending on his, his judgment on whether he thought it was necessary in this particular area or not. I'm more concerned with bonds if they actually are affecting our roads. In this case, I mean, these utilities like fiber optic, I mean, they, they don't really affect our road much. It's not like, you know, when they're installing or crossing roads, they have to bore under our roads. I don't find, you know, the intrusion to our roads is gonna, I don't believe it's gonna be enough to justify a large bond.
A six inch.
There is several crossings, correct, all bored.
Six inch water line gets a little more concerned.
That's correct. Anytime you're trenching in or installing water lines, even boring water lines isn't as bad. But any kind of your open trenching water lines, you are disturbing a lot more material, of course, because the depth and the width have these trench boxes and things like that. Then, yes, I do think the bond would be beneficial to at least hold the contractor liable and repair, you know, the roads that they do damage. I don't know that we're gonna see that type of disturbance with this utility. So in answer to you, as far as picking and choosing, I understand that, but I do think each utility is different, each location is different. So I think that kind of justifies picking and choosing a little bit myself. And I, I think our ordinance allows us to do that. It's, it's, it doesn't require that we require a bond. It says we may require a bond. Have we?
And just to be clear, if there is a problem, we can go after them after the fact, whether we have a bond or not.
Our ordinance and our, our permitting process still allows us to go after them for repairs and damages.
In areas where it's possible, or, well, I won't even say likely, I'll say possible that there could be damage. We would, in general, you would suggest a bond. In areas where it's not very likely, not probable, then you're not as concerned. Like for the, for instance, this, because it's a small, it's a thin disturbance, it's a shallow, relatively shallow disturbance, and it's an area that really doesn't, shouldn't cause that.
It should. Have you required a bond in any other fiber optic company?
Yet.
We have, we have not, you know, since, since I've been in charge here, we haven't, and I can't remember any before that. This ordinance was just adopted this year, so.
Well, I don't think we've required a bond since we adopted the ordinance.
We have not.
Okay, further discussion. Seeing or hearing that, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Um, now we're to the easements. We do have, we did get our, our first easements on the Christiansen Drive. We have five easements that we are pursuing. These are for two of them. This is with the Emmys. They live on the south side of Christiansen Drive at the intersection of Christiansen Drive and Maitland Road. We have offered them the compensation for their permanent easement. They would like the permanent easement compensated for the amount of three hundred dollars of that. They are not requesting anything for temporary easement. They are not requesting anything, the removal of any trees on this property.
This is an easement that we're seeking to replace that box culvert.
That's right.
That Christiansen Drive on Maitland Road.
Yeah.
I was thinking they were looking for access easements.
No, sir, this is, this is the easement that is required of the county to, we, we've already got the grant in the sum of one million seventy thousand, I believe, for the bridge. But it's up to the county to acquire the easements, and the easements are not part of the grant program or any of that. So it's up to us to get them and, and outline with our ordinance as far as compensation for easements. We, this would be the amount of three hundred dollars, so, and I, I'd like to have this signed. That's my recommendation.
That's your signature or the chairman's?
This would be the chairman's signature and the auditor's signature.
Motion to follow recommendation of chairman signing.
Second.
And the auditor.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I think the auditor signs is like a notary, in most cases where the chairman signs a contract. That's how that plays.
You all right?
I'm dismissed.
On the second one, sir?
We are, the second one is for our, our project that we, we have started so far on the Maitland Road Bridge. This is, uh, this is the last of the easements that are required for that. This is for Mr. Glenn Wentz. He wanted a little bit more compensation. He wanted compensated for the permanent easement, and he also wanted compensated for the tree loss. He also had some pretty strict requirements as far as the temporary easement goes, and he doesn't want any more trees cut than absolutely necessary. Any more trees cut that he, that would need to be cut, he would certainly want to be notified ahead of time. He does want compensated for five trees that we are gonna take out outside of the right of way. There are two in the right of way that we don't pay for trees in the right of way. But we, we would have to give him the five hundred dollars for the five trees that we're gonna cut in his right, or in his property. So that brings that one. And that total for this easement is one thousand and forty dollars. Again, we need this easement, so I'm recommending we have the chairman sign this one as well.
Motion to follow recommendation of the chairman sign.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion, uh, go ahead, discussion?
Sorry.
All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
How is the four oh four permit coming on that? Do you have any idea? I know you, you never know what the status is.
We never know, and I hate to say, because I've been promising it next week for the last three months.
That's one further up, right?
That's the, so we on the Maitland Road Bridge, so we can finish that. We have the bypass in place. We just can't quite finish it. I did meet with the engineers yesterday on a different topic, and it was brought up that the Corps of Engineers contacted them and they thought we would have a, a four oh four permit by the end of the week.
So next week.
I'm hoping that we can, we're already graveling that road and we need this to tie together, so it would be really cool if it happened. And I will say on that Maitland Road, by the way, too, a meeting with the engineers yesterday, it was brought up that that we're really close to, with the money that, that you guys set aside to do the preliminary engineering, the hydraulic study and the design of this bypass, there's enough money left over that they can continue on and we can get this project shovel-ready. And in a perfect world, we could possibly bid this at the same time with the Christiansen Drive
Oh.
Bridge, provided we get the grant January second.
That'd be good.
Yes. We'll see, but it's way, way ahead of schedule at this point, so. I told them to keep plugging away on it and let's get as much done as we can with the money that we allotted for that. And it's just gonna, we should be able to get that bridge replaced quickly.
Okay. It's nice in a time when, when money doesn't seem to go quite as far that we're able to get a little further on this project. I mean, that anticipated for the.
Right, so that was encouraging. Now that those easements are in place for that Maitland, I do have the utility and the right of way certificate, the right of way and the utility certificates to be signed so that when we do apply for the grant, again, this will get us a little bit closer. So I would like the chairman also to sign these two certificates on the Maitland Road Bridge.
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. You were right, John. Wear off this pen.
Yeah, we got more. I, I gotta tell you that Celerity sent me a map this other day. They're planning on doing a lot in the next year. Everything north and west of Spearfish, pretty much every side road out there. Let's get you a new pen.
You did.
Okay.
Uh, just so you're aware, Mount Roosevelt, I have been in contact with the state DOT and the city of Deadwood. We're ready to pursue the removal of one mile of this road. This is one of the roads that is on our system as a county primary that's been a pain in our butt for a while. The city of Deadwood has one mile, point nine nine miles of it, I should say, and they did provide the documents from the Forest Service where they had a third easement to take control of that road that has been sent to the state. And the state has provided us with this resolution to have the, that point nine nine miles removed from the county system. It'll be, if you guys want to continue with it, it'll have to go to a public hearing.
The city will take over, but we stop then, or how's that work?
Well, the city's been doing it historically forever. I mean, it's their road. It's just a road that is on the state's system showing it as our road.
It's been a mistake.
The other problem being that the remainder of that road still shows up as a county primary road, and it creates a lot of problems with people just driving up and down that road. It's for all practical purposes. It's a, it's a side-by-side trail. It's not a very nice road for travel. We will be then changing the remainder of that road, even though it's, in my opinion, not a county road. At least we can get it to the county secondary system, and it's one step closer to at least we can tailor the maintenance level or the fact that there's no maintenance on it, and we can, we can sign that, so.
Mr. Chairman, John, is it the Shine Street side that you're talking about, so coming out of Deadwood, or is it the side coming out behind the lodge?
Maybe behind the lodge, but then back around to Denver.
Denver, yeah.
Yeah, that's that loop.
That's right. This would be the whole thing. The state DOT shows this as a county primary road. It's on the primary system, and thus people that just look it up, they, they travel this road with vehicles that aren't really equipped to drive that road.
Okay, Bruce? Does the city maintain that part of the road going up to Stagecoach Run or whatever it is?
Yes.
And so?
They've paved it. They have a third easement with the Forest Service, which further augments my point that it's not even a county road. They got a, they got an easement from the Forest Service to improve that road and maintain it.
Is the whole thing too, that if people use MapQuest or Google Maps or whatever, then if this gets moved off on the secondary system, it won't show up as a, as a road you can travel on?
That is my intent.
Okay.
So, and that would be for the next meeting. We have to advertise this, you know, in the paper for a public hearing, and, and we have the ad ready to go. I just wanted to make sure that you guys are on board that we can further go with this.
I just want to double check. We don't have the intention of closing this road. We just have the intention of putting minimal maintenance on it.
That's correct.
So people know that they can take their pickup or whatever, a Jeep, or you don't want to go up there and you're nice.
From the lodge side up to the monument, that road is fairly decent and in decent condition. The rest of that road is not so good.
Yeah.
And I just want to make sure that it doesn't show up as a county primary road, that we can make it a county secondary road, and then we can make it as a minimum maintenance or a no maintenance.
Okay. So we need a motion to?
Well, with your permission, we've got it scheduled for the next meeting, I believe.
That's right. I'm just asking your permission to go forward with it. I can put it in the paper and we'll have it ready for the next meeting. So would you like a motion?
I just, I just, no, I just know that the public hearing will be set for September third at nine.
And then also our five-year plan, we need to set a date for that. We're asking to set the date of September third, twenty twenty-four for the five-year plan to present that. That would also be a public meeting, also advertised in the paper. It has to be turned into the state by October fifteenth to be eligible for any grants.
Okay.
When will, will you have a copy of that so we can look at it? When will, will you have a copy of that so we can look at it? Or is that the one that you give us? Did we have, is that the one you gave us? Did we have that before budget?
Yeah. I gave you some gravel.
We had some preliminary. That's what it was.
But I would, and that is, I would ask any input that you guys would have. I can certainly, I can certainly send you, I can email you all a copy of our last year's, you know, the two-date five-year plan. So if you have any input, I would be, I would entertain any input that you guys have.
I'm sure I can find that, but if you'd send a new copy, I'd appreciate it.
I will.
Uh, John, so I, I think on the agenda, I have done the graveling plan as well. So do you want me to leave that on there?
Yes, we can leave it all on there. Yep.
That'll be at the next meeting. No, that'll be on the, on September third.
September third.
But your next meeting in August is when you'll be talking about moving the Mount Roosevelt Road, just so we're clear with the minutes.
That is correct.
And if you could, uh, could you give, uh, Diane or, or Crystal, whoever, send me a copy of that resolution in Word format? So Brendan's been along to be able to put that in the minutes as well. Make sense?
It's a.
I don't know who was, was it?
I did. But I'll send it again if you'd like. I can send it to you.
Thank you.
John. Try to get a copy of that one if you get it on something.
Yeah, I'll get.
Um, and I guess that's it. The only, uh, paving projects, we're done with all of our paving projects. Everything came out pretty well. We got some cleanup yet to do that we haven't got finished. That's our responsibility. Um, but other than that, everything's pretty well done and it came out pretty well. I don't have the final bill. We didn't get the last billing. I think they were waiting. We don't have some compaction testing yet, so we're still waiting on that until we, uh, release, I think, the final ten percent. And I did get a call yesterday. I want to bring it to everybody's attention. There will be a house mover called and they want to move a house on Creekside Loop and down our road. I did, uh, that was why I met with the engineers yesterday. I wanted to make sure I got the estimate of the weight from the, the home mover, the house mover, the company and, and their axle configuration. I wanted to make sure our two structures on the old bell road would handle that. So, um, and we did give them the permission to go forward because it was well under the rated amount of those bridges. So if you see somewhere here, somebody, somebody contacts you about that, they, they did contact us and the bridge is all good to go on that.
Eric moved his house?
My neighbor is. Creekside Loop and they're going to go via the old bell road to Highway five, crossing two of our structures.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Any questions for John before we kick him loose? Okay, we'll take a five-minute break. Thanks, John.
I'm going to stop recording on thirteen.
Four thirteen.
There we go.
We're back on?
Yep, we're back on. Okay, so this is for a preliminary and a final plat right off of the Whitewood, well, what was it, Whitewood?
Valley?
Whitewood Valley Road, there we go, Whitewood Valley Road. They had done a subdivision for their son, I don't know, maybe about four or five years ago, it's been a little while now, and then started some fire plan work on it. There's two houses out there, they'd like to create one more lot, overall acreage allows it. So it's a nine acre, a four acre, and a five acre, it's a little give or take a little bit. We would like to create one more, and with that, the it's basically just submitting it as is, there really isn't a lot of issue except for there was a fire plan that they did, and the fire plan, they do need to do a little bit of work in sliver, so kind of right here. There's a little bit of work there that needs to be completed. So I think overall, the board was okay with the split, knowing that the firework needs to be completed on that piece, but we do have an actual fire plan in place already.
It looks better than mitigation already.
You got it started. Yeah, so I know they were hoping to try to have it done, so they ended up doing a recommendation of approval on it. Obviously, we have to have that fire mitigation, but I don't think it'll take long to finish. There wasn't a lot to be done.
There's no structures on that lot currently?
No, there's no structures on that middle lot.
And then withhold the building permit until the fire plan has been completed. My motion is to approve the preliminary final and withhold the building permit until the fire plan is complete.
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay, we have motion in a second, further discussion? Why don't they have to have all the fire plan done, they're going to get stuck.
That wasn't my motion.
That was, yeah, it was included in the motion to...
No, he said, no, to hold up the building permit, but not the plat, because that's, because that, my motion was to approve it. But not, that, the reason why is because that wasn't my, my motion was to approve it this way. Fire plan is largely finished, no building permit until it's completely completed.
Okay, yeah, I see where you're going, I just tried to vote in regards.
Sure, well, you don't have to second my motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yep. We'll get it recorded in a couple of days, I don't know how long it'll take me, but we'll get it done.
Okay, guys, it's not a hurry, I'm meeting with the district, so I'm just trying to take the additional logs off the property,
Okay.
trees off the property tonight or tomorrow night, and I expect Jim to have that done, you know, within the month.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So this one is the puzzle, it's track B and track D revised preliminary and a final plat with a fire plan, which is currently there. So this one, there, it's, it's basically a lot line adjustment per se here, but it's kind of a lot to see, but the old lot line's right down in here. So this little, this here was the original track B, now they're moving it here, so it's making two larger tracks. So the old lot line was, or the old track B was much smaller. And then it also plats an unplatted remainder, we had a bunch of stuff that was left over in there that was never platted, so they platted it and created the bigger lot. Yes, they did, and it was, um... Yeah.
Motion to approve the preliminary and final.
We needed a fire plan on this though, didn't we?
We did.
Wasn't there some question about some of that didn't have a current fire plan?
I'll second your discussion.
Go ahead.
I thought it all...
Is this fire hydrants?
Yes, so there was a fire plan on it, and there was no work to be done, so it was, yeah, so there's currently no infrastructure on track B. The prior owner was Barb Turner, had a fire plan done originally, and there was nothing needed at that time, so we just included the original fire plan. So, but there's no work to be completed because it's just a lot line adjustment.
Oh, there's no work to be completed because that's what it said about the fire plan.
That's what it was, yeah. Yes.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the final and the preliminary, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Final.
Okay, so this one is a final lot, 133, and the utility lot 2, this was included in the bond and the memorandum agreement that you guys did just last month. And there is the fire plan for that. Now, this is the one that I kind of, sort of told you guys about, that he is originally, this is kind of tied to the project that you guys are doing with the Maitland Bridge. They, he has not been able to get the guy for the fire plan to go up there until the bridge stuff, and I know I was hoping John would say, but yeah, Screechlo can't get in there. Because he can't go, he can't go up the switchbacks with his equipment or something. And John said he has to go the other way, but he can't get through the other way.
It'll be a year before, at least, because we're not going to let, let that bid till spring.
So he's...
No, I think he just waited for the bypass.
Oh, right.
Yeah, just, just the bypass, that's all he needs, and then he can get in, but it sounds like right now, his concern is, is he has people trying to buy lots, but he can't finish the fire plan because of that, so he would like us to be able to approve the final plats, and he is putting in there, like, they know, like, the fire plan is already bonded, so he's just going to have to keep those active, and then we may have some building permits coming in before, you know, because they'll go in and start tearing stuff out for building. But I just want you to be aware of that, because normally we wouldn't allow a building permit until the fire plan's completed, but he's asking, can we do something to keep moving forward, because he's not really stuck, because he has Screechlo contracted, but he can't get out there. I don't know what to do with it.
Would be an idea, because they're going to want building permits, right?
Yes.
Is maybe tie this instead, I was thinking about occupancy permits, and of course, that obligation would have to get passed on from, from the seller to the buyer, to let them know that, right, but maybe, maybe that's the solution there?
Right. Just kind of thinking out loud. Part of the fire plans usually include defensible space, and normally on new construction, you'd have a lot of that cleared, and there would inherently be defensible space, so it might be a thing before the occupancy permit that if they want to come and redo that particular lot for the fire plan, because there's fire hydrants up there.
There will be, yeah.
But they need to thin some stuff out, but there may be some, with the, with the building sites, that defensible space may already be done by the construction of the structure, I know that in the past had happened. So I just, I'm kind of thinking it through, and I guess I'm comfortable with that, getting that in my mind, going that direction.
So my only thought is, it might be beneficial, and I just didn't know where to go with it, so I told him we would talk about it, is maybe, maybe we need to amend the memorandum of agreement to have that in there.
That sounds right.
Because right now, it just says that you have to have a fire plan completed, basically, by a certain date, but obvious, well, we're going to have multiple, because he has a couple of different, because he was hoping to only do it for like six months.
Well, what I would do, I would, I would approve the final with the in condition occupancy permit on either the complete plan being done, or a new fire plan on that particular lot being completed. So they could do just a single lot, yes, before occupancy. Does that make sense? And then if we need, whatever we need to amend?
Yeah, Gene's on right now. Gene, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, Amber.
Okay, we just started kind of talking about it, and I, I kind of let him know what your goal is, is because Screechlo can't get out there, you know, with some building permit questions that we've had, and, you know, these plats, and Brandon is basically kind of suggesting that maybe we could tie it to an occupancy permit on the house, as long as the fire plan gets done. So you would have to have something in your documentation to your seller, or no, your buyer, that that is still going to have to incur, because right now, you hold that, you hold that bond for the fire plan, that, that landowner isn't tied to it, so how, how can we make sure that that gets done, I think is kind of where we're at.
So Virchey, you're saying, since I'm showing as a landowner, and since I've got elevated homes that's going to be building, that they're buying the, they're buying the lot, but Maitland Partners has got the, the bond out there for the fire wise. So what you're saying is there's no tie between the two, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, that's my concern, because as soon as you no longer own that lot, I don't have anything to go back on a bond for, because the bond was with you.
Okay.
Gene, this is Bruce, so I think the concern is, if it's not tied to a building permit, and the work that hasn't been done, I go and build my house, and I've got my building permit, and I think everything is good, and then I come and I'm on my occupancy permit, and Amber's office says, not so fast, Gene hasn't done the fire wise work yet, and so we're trying to figure out a way to put the fires of the lots on notice, if that's a requirement, does that make sense?
Could we, and I'm, I'm just, I wasn't ready for this, let me ask you this, I guess the thing is, is there could be a tag on the title with the, at the, for the title of the property, that it cannot be transferred or anything like that until fire wise is done?
That might be a bit drastic.
Gentlemen. If I might just, if I might just interject here, I guess the guys, I, one thing I am, you know, I don't want to deceit anybody and stuff like this, and I guess I, I hope that our record in the past is kind of, you know, proven itself there. I guess we just got into a situation here with winter coming and stuff like this, I'm trying to get it figured out. If you guys will tell me the best way that I can do that, we are more than willing to follow what you need and stuff like that, I understand your situation. We do have John Screechlo that's on track to get this thing done for us, and whatever we can, however we can accommodate you to get this done, we would greatly appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask Rick this question as a Realtor, could that be in a purchase agreement? Basically talking about is notice, that the buyer of the lot is on notice of this fact, right? And, and so, could you put that in a purchase agreement?
Yeah, Gene, that'd be a lot plainer to do, is put in a purchase agreement between you and the builder when you transfer to them. Put it in the purchase agreement that they cannot get an occupancy permit prior to the fire wise being done. Because if you do a deed restriction, I just, that's, that's messy, that's a lot of expense you don't need to do, so just put it in the purchase agreement, they sign it as, the builder signs as the new owner, and they're obligated to it. Okay, all righty, um, yes, I will be more than happy to do that, and then once we do that purchase agreement, do we just give that to Amber, who do we give that to?
I would want to copy the purchase agreement to put with the building permit, I think, would be the best way to do it, that way I have it before issuing a building permit.
We have it.
Yeah.
Okay, we will probably, I will, we will get that done, our attorney from Spirit Feeds will take care of that again, his name escapes me right now, Keith, are you there?
Eric, Eric Neese, is it?
Yes, Eric Neese will be doing this.
Yeah, no, Eric's not here.
Okay.
Further discussion, Eric?
So just a question, if it goes into the purchase agreement, what recourse do we have to ensure that it's completed?
We have, so he's still keeping the bond.
It ties back in the gene, so what, what happens on these deals, the guy building the house is going to take possession.
I can track that.
Yeah.
Correct, and I guess the thing is, I do, I do have a bond up there that I have provided also.
It will keep the bond in place, which...
Okay, I made a motion.
And gentlemen, just for your, just for your information, just for your information, John Screechlo, just soon as we get over that bridge, and I guess, do we, further, I mean, I don't want to complicate it, but I hope, do we have any kind of an indication as to when that will be able to be taken care of? Because that's the first, that's the first job he's going to hit when he comes up there.
We were told today by the county superintendent, as we have been in the past, one more week, they're waiting on a document.
Okay, all right, okay.
And as quick as they, as quick as they have that document in hand, it won't take them very long to put that in, they've got everything ready to go. Yeah, it's the bypass and not the bridge, Gene, the bypass, yeah.
That is, that is correct, it is my understanding as we speak here, that I'll contact Eric Neese, and I'm going to have him amend that purchase agreement, and I'm going to have him put in there, they cannot have occupancy, occupancy of this facility until the fire wise is done on the entire lot, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and, and I will, Gene, because I know he's going to want it, as soon as the minutes come out, I will send Eric the minutes, so he can see the mo, the motion too.
All right, that'd be great, if you would, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, so that answers, so that ties to the plat, as long as you're comfortable with it, we might have a couple more that this comes up, do you want me to bring?
Are you comfortable with that?
I, I just wanted something, because this was different than what we've done in the past.
Well, we case.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, so Gene, we'll try to get this recorded, I don't know if you've signed this plat yet, we might need to deal with that, but we'll look at it, and I'll get ahold of you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Gene.
All right.
Good day.
Preliminary close to build.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Next one is Dakota Highlands, there is a couple of letters in there that I did submit to you guys, they were in there from some of the neighbors out there, and Brad is here today too. So basically, what they're doing is they're trying to do an amended preliminary plat, and this was, this is the new version, what it ends up being is they're actually decreasing density, they're making this lot here much bigger, it had lots in there, kind of changed out some of the other lots a little bit, but it does decrease overall density. The question that has come about is, with that, there's also some kind of piecemealing, here's what it kind of looks like, let me go back to this, there is the road design in here, because this was a, there's a certificate of completion, it's for the next phase of the Dakota Highlands Estates. All improvements have been completed based off the construction plans dated from December 15th, 2021. The updates were completed during construction, they talked about Heavenly Hills West was not extended from the Prairie View Loop to the intersection of the Ponderosa Pass Road Dakota Jewel Circle, the owner decided to plow out approximately 56.63 acres of the western portion of the property, and the intersection of Dakota Jewel Circle, Heavenly Hills Road and Ponderosa Pass Road was lowered from the original design, because the owner did not want to extend the Heavenly Hill Road, because basically, he's keeping that large lot for himself, so he didn't feel like he needed to do the whole, the whole new road, because that's going to be his own, so we did get this update from Interstate, because that was one of the questions that had come up, is, well, why? Why is the road not being completed as you guys had originally done? And then there's, you know, fire plan information in there well, as well. Now, overall, I didn't have a concern with this normally, when you're decreasing density, we always kind of like that, but because the road design changed from the original one to this one, we wanted to bring it to your attention. And then Brad's here, I think he has some information too.
Yeah, sure, share with us what you, show you my graphics here.
Do we have the new road design?
I like Amber's a lot.
I didn't see it.
I can see this one too.
There is no new road design.
Much better. So, so this is all finally plotted, which was phase one, so what we did is, as you can see, this snake trail that kind of goes through here, that was supposed to be the road, and kind of from the beginning, I know we plotted this thing with maximum density, but yet, we came back and said, well, we always knew we wanted to build something back here ourselves, so as we started looking where we wanted to build, my property I wanted to build on was being split by a road. So I came back and said, let's dead end that road here, let's dead end that road here as a driveway, so they're just individual driveways that meet individual specs that don't hit what more than two homes, I believe, and then this is my personal driveway, and what we're going to end up doing is building a barn for my, for my horses and a shop here, and a house right up here. And part of the reason I want to be here today to explain that is, you'll probably be seeing this as a final plat request next month. As far, as far as a lot, I need to point this out too, Kayla, who's right behind me, she's, this, this lot is already fire baited, everything's done, there's utilities to it, she'll be requesting a final plat next month to build her house there, so I need somebody to watch my horses, that's the deal. So what we ended up doing, again, like I said, is, this is a, if you guys have ever been back there, this is a really nice metal flat area, perfect for pasturing my horses, and that's why we abandoned building that road. This road hasn't changed at all, and that's the egress, the second egress that they designed. The other thing that we did is, all of these lots used to be two lots, one there, one there, and after talking to builders, yes, we could have built along this side, but it's pretty steep. With the amount of dirt and trees we had to remove, we decided to combine those lots in this, this plat, we just didn't want to destroy the, the community to that degree, these are all the same, this changed a little bit, because we had to make a access road for Black Hills Energy to bring their power in, and that was the logical way to get it in from their hole here. As far as fire abatement's concerned, in your previous discussions with these other plats, it wasn't lightning and helpful for me. Alter Godt has done everything, but I just spoke to him on the phone, and he reviewed, he's got this 20, about 20 acres to do yet on my 56. And he can't get to it till this fall.
He just fired by.
He's, I mean, he sent me a quote, he said, Brad, can I just text you something, because I'm bouncing around in a fire truck, and I can't get on my computer. Adam did everything else in this development, he did a great job, we never buried a stump, we never buried a tree, we hauled out probably a hundred side dumps of stumps and trees, instead of burying them. He did a great job, we did a burn pile back here last winter, but we cleaned that up pretty well. So, utilities will probably be done in the next two to four weeks, that's what's going in in this back road right now. There's utilities that are, are already on Kayla's lot, that she'll want a final on, because it's coming from Butte, all the way down here. Black Energy, if you remember, had to come in from this part, Butte came in from that part. Yeah. Yeah, that, that was quite a project to try and figure out where Black Hills Energy goes. And then MDU is coming in from over here and extending down there.
What is lot 36 about?
36.
It's that little tiny one in the middle there?
Oh, that was an accessory lot, that's owned by, by the association or us, so that's designed to, we had some of these little spots designed for like little park benches, or people to stop to take hikes on, so it's just low.
So it's a no build, does that have no build on it, or?
Yeah. The other thing I want to point out, what's really interesting, that doesn't show this density, is at the next meeting as well, this is a final platted lot right here, this is part of the preliminary today. We'll be combining these two into one lot, because that person has an offer, sitting on the table, we'd be closing already, but we need your final next time to allow this lot to be a part of that one. And then another example is four and five up here, we have one buyer buying those two lots, that he's, he won't maybe combine them, but he's going to use both of them. So the density is even less than what is displayed, because we're seeing combined lots more and more, and that was kind of our intention.
Can you explain what the, the letter was about, is, does this affect anything that?
No, so the roads are all done, but you see pretty much on here, he's just, he was clarifying what's being removed, so the original road profile that you approved.
There is one route, one road there, that profile is, is non-existent, and this, that, that road, it doesn't pertain to that letter?
It does, that's, so basically, he's saying that they're not building that road, but it was in the original road profile that you guys approved. But they're, but they're asking permission to not build it, so that's really what.
That's going to be a gold road.
Correct.
Yeah.
Does it, is it, not having that road adversely affect anybody, I think that's the question.
I don't think so, because they still have that emergency access out, and then both of the cul-de-sacs that are going to be now on there.
It looks like everything existing does, and the only person that could be affected would be the person to the west on that. If you go straight west, yeah, slide your pen to the, to the west, you're going east, right there, would be whoever that is.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's Ted and Colin Thompson's property, they have 160 acres.
And they actually have from the other side.
Actually have 193, and that filters, there's that mining property on each side, and they have like a thumb that, at the end of that 190 acres, it kind of goes back into there.
That would be the only person that would possibly be affected, and, and yeah, they've got other accesses, so.
I would guess this will never be developed, because it'd have to come somehow through the mine property.
And that was the question, is if, if, if that's the only way in there, then I won't support this. If the only way to access that is through that, what you drew initially, that came right up against there, then yeah, then you are adversely affecting the neighbor's property by changing it.
They've got access from their own property company.
And that's what I thought, he's saying the only way to be developed is if it went through his. So it can't be both, it can be one or the other.
Well, you'd have to have two accesses if they ever develop this, I guess, but there is an access out on their ranch, Ted's, Ted's property.
And my understanding is that Warren chemicalist come out second time and took care of the weeds, right?
Yes, so just to clarify that, we, Kayla arranged Warren to come out, back in June, they were behind by four weeks, and Dave happened to show up the day after we sprayed, and there wasn't the adequate quill that we killed that we wanted, so we brought him out a week later, so I think Dave was satisfied, I think it's a little early to see, well, not really, I think there's a lot of dead weeds out there right now, so we're proactive, we called Warren before Dave even inspected it, so it's just that, we have to do a second, second treatment the next week after.
All right, well, thank you. Any further questions or discussion?
Do you have a fire plan at all?
Yeah, well, you mean the fire abatement? The fire abatement is completed, except for 20, 20 acres, which is part of this and part of this. So what I'm hoping is, and, and what I'm hoping is, is that we can, I, I can't remember, Amber, what we did last time in phase one, because Adam couldn't get out there fast enough to get final, I don't think I bonded, I think I either paid him or put money into the county to cover his estimate, I know I did something. So I might be requesting if, if I can at least get my, my shed and barn up, so I can get my equipment undercover before winter, as Adam's working on this over winter.
I guess on this particular, with them not having incomplete lots, it's his own lot, and there's plenty of open space, I mean, where he's building is not affected by the trees, and it's his own property, it's not being sold to somebody else, I'm not as concerned about a fire plan in that scenario, because of where he's building, the building is, we wouldn't normally do it as long as his site plan shows in the valley area, not up in the trees, so I guess I wouldn't be as concerned. So today, it's just the amended preliminary, and mainly, you don't really, you're not doing anything with the road design or anything, except for the fact that they just aren't going to build that portion of the road. I have a design for it, but they're just not going to build that.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Do you need some type of motion?
Motion to approve the amended preliminary.
Okay, I'll second it, further discussion. Okay, seeing, did you have?
No, I would vote against it if I didn't do the fire plan, and I'd seen like, been letting them do preliminary fire plans for the past, but then they changed that a little.
Yeah, this is just an amended preliminary, so.
This is a preliminary, and he does have a fire plan on it, he's not asking for a final right now.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion before us will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Let's do the 915, because we're already passed that to a public hearing. Let's do the nine fifteen because we're already passed that to the public hearing. And this is on Lighthouse Development. And we'll, we'll let Amber present it to us and then we'll have the public hearing.
Anybody here for that? But I'm not going to present it because there was a letter that we received. Nope, nope. Um, there was a letter that we received, well, an email that I got CC'd on and I don't know if you guys did or not. I don't remember. And it was from the CID to Lighthouse, basically stating, well, there you are, right there. The letter basically stated that the CID was not in favor of this project. I don't feel like that's our place to be involved in that, but I know they wanted you to be aware of it. And then other than that, the overall project is the same land that you had already approved to have the warehouse on, like the showroom. It's the same piece of property. They're doing away with the warehouse showroom and they would like to put in these like this kind of boutique motel sort of cabin situation. And that's kind of where it's at. I, it was hard for me to say that it wasn't okay. Because it's a, it's a beauty. It meets kind of the density. It's really no different than the really big houses that we have there. But I think the CID issue with Lighthouse is their own issue, I guess, is kind of how I looked at it. I don't know. That's, that's really all I have. I don't know if you have anything else to add. It's.
Yeah, I think I always, I mean, we're still working with our committee. I mean, it wasn't, there's still some discussion on what we were going to put in there. I mean, we have a full design layout and I'm not sure if you guys had pictures of that. But so still a conversation with the CID.
All right. Well, it's scheduled for a public hearing right now. So we will go ahead and continue with our public hearing. And the format we will use is if you are here for or against, would like to speak to this, please stand, state your name and address for the record. And proceed. Is there anyone that would like to speak at this time? Or against this? Okay, one more time. Anyone would like to speak for or against this? This is the time and place. Seeing that, we'll close the public hearing and offer to the board.
Is this the area where they have to have access to? Not on the main road?
Yep, same, same property. So they have to access it through Amber's Way, which is inside the subdivision. They can't come off the highway. Yep. And that didn't change. Their, their overall layout is it's just changing the buildings. It's lots the same, the access is the same. It's just changing the structures.
But they don't have access to the main road anywhere?
No.
And planning and zoning obviously was okay with it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, I guess I look at it, it's switching from one type of commercial to another type of commercial and no other changes.
What's your pleasure?
I'll move to the room.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion?
I just, I'm struggling with how a CID should operate in this instance. That's not.
Yeah.
Because I mean, they're, they're, they're a governmental body that should have some, some say and some stuff. They don't seem to exercise it or they don't, they haven't seemed to consolidate it into anything that makes any sense. So.
I don't think they have any zoning control from, from how I write. They, they can control the building, like how it looks, what they put on it. So they still are going to have to work with.
You're talking about architecture.
Yeah, their architectural stuff, but the actual zoning, I.
Still vested with the county.
We're still in control.
Well, the zoning is one thing, but I mean, development of certain things, I would think they, they, I would think they could exercise authority, but they just, I don't know. They, I don't know. It just seems strange to me that.
Yeah.
But it doesn't overlap into us.
I don't think so. I think Lighthouse is going to have to have their own permissions from Powderhouse Pass to CID to deal with that side of it. I don't think it affects us.
Okay, further discussion. Seeing that, all those who favor the motion before us will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, I want to go back to the one that we skipped so that we could do the hearing.
Pardon?
Thank you.
Thank you. The chair, Robyn.
Hoping somebody would have made him say his name for the record, but no, he did.
No, we talked a little bit about it with the last ones, but. Matt Simons?
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Yeah. Okay.
That's funny. Parent Lighthouse, he, did he finally retire from the?
No, still doing that, dude.
Full time.
Okay, we are back to, what are we on? Lot thirteen, I think, right? Sure. Yes. Okay. So this one was, you guys approved the preliminary. And then as part of that, you remember, we had the discussion about the section line vacation and you guys did, you approved the section line vacation and it got recorded, I think now, isn't it? Is it recorded now? This is the Kutra one. I, I think it was closed. We were in the whatever, two weeks notice, like we had to go on the paper. So this is just the final of that. Nothing has changed. It's for them to do the lot line adjustment with Kutra's. And then as we were going through this original process, we found that the shop that we allowed them to build was actually in the section line. So then they went through and vacated the section line and now we're asking for the final plat. So that's kind of what's going on.
Motion approved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing that, all those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Call Warren one?
All right. You're up.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you again. We have, um, our work to like construct this selenium treatment plant for water.
Um, we intend to construct this on our property in sort of the north.
Could I get you to speak up just a little bit, please?
Name an address for the record?
Yeah, you name an address.
I work for Core Work.
Okay.
If you can maybe just sit up here and see the microphone.
I wasn't sure if I was supposed to or not.
Well, you're more than welcome. You have the floor.
Well, thank you for having me again. Uh, my name is Jasmine McCauley. I am the environmental manager for Core Work. We are hoping to build a selenium treatment plant on our property. Um, we've been working closely with the D A N R on this and are submitting the plans to construct the building, an associated pond, a catchment and a pop house.
Okay. And this is one of those that we have a technical revision before us. Um, and so normally with those technical revisions, the state, in order for them to move forward with the process, I have to send something.
Send the meeting minutes.
That you guys are, that you've seen it and you're okay with it. And then I just usually write a quick letter and attach the minutes and that's usually all they need. So.
So I'll get to see if you can do it.
You, yep.
Then they go through the regular building permit process with all the.
Yeah, when we get to that point, we'll do a building permit on it and all of that. But this is just for the state's records. They have to show that they came and asked you about it.
So this is just information. If we object, we can object. If we don't object, we just.
I just write a letter and say there's no objection and I include the minutes.
I'm guessing it's something they're required to do that. Is.
Just please, yep.
Okay, you need a motion?
Usually you said something to the effect of you have no objection.
To support the.
There we go.
Technical revision on the fault spot on selenium treatment plant building area.
Yes, that's what I said. I saw.
Yeah, do we have a second?
You do. Good two minutes.
Okay, motion and a second. Do, uh, opposed? All those who favor the motion will say aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Amber, if you have time, Eric, do everything you want today.
The minutes won't be done, but I can at least let him know that it was approved and then I can attach minutes later. Thank you. Yep, that's fine. Okay, so this one is kind of in line with what we already talked about with the plaques. I wanted you to be aware of it.
Addressed that, didn't we? It's like go for it, but you need to put a restriction on the end part.
Yeah, as long as you're fine with it. He originally was just going to ask if I could at least do a building permit on the foundation only. But if you're okay with the other way, we'll just go forward with it.
Chairman, there's a gentleman.
Yeah, there is a gentleman.
Hi, I'm Keith Boyta.
Yep.
Keith, what's your address?
My resident?
Yes.
Oh, two six zero five Top Shelf Avenue, Spearfish.
Keith, are you building on that lot?
Yes.
Okay, so they, we talked about it a little bit earlier. Gene was, Gene was online.
Okay.
Um, when we did the plat and what they decided to do is we are going to have Eric Neese as part of the purchase agreement. We're going to deal with it that way. So we can just do a full building permit.
But you can't get occupancy until, until the fire plan has been.
Oh, perfect. That'd be.
So we're going to deal with it on the, the purchase agreement side instead. So they did already announce, we, a little bit earlier. So we're good to go and we're working with Eric to get the right wording.
Okay. And then after he's done with that, we can apply the building permit then?
Yep.
Sounds great. I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, Keith.
Thank you.
We're going to take a five minute break.
So on this one here. Thirty-one, but.
Correct.
The other one, this is one thirty.
Correct. The final plat was for one thirty-three. We've already done one thirty-one, but the question is going to come up. So I thought we'll deal with this. So I know how, do I need? I would just, you could just put the, we're going to do a purchase agreement. I think that's fine. His question with that one was, can I get a?
We're here at nine forty-five.
Foundation only. Well, they decided not to do that. We're going to deal with it.
So all this basically.
I would just do the same thing once you get it.
We need a motion without a sound?
No, because they are, we just did it earlier. Okay.
So are we doing?
Um, I think we're doing Dustin Olson, right? Okay, yep.
Oh, I'm off. We're just above one forty-five.
Yeah, we've got a building permit for Dustin Olson yet too. And then the variance. So we're, yeah, we should be okay.
What topic are you here for? Oh, just chat about the grant. Is that on, it's not on agenda?
No.
Okay, so until the end. Yeah, just hearing items from the public. Yep, yep. Awesome. First time.
Yeah.
Seriously, Bruce?
Amber, did you show the previous on there?
Um, I didn't. See.
That's the new site plan.
That's the new site plan showing all those lots. That's all we're really talking about. So that, I think it'll be all right. Did you change the site plan? No, this is, this is what it is, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is, whatever second, other lot with the fire plan, a lot, uh, fire plan was, was a smaller lot. So is the fire plan encompass the whole thing?
No, but it's a lot.
You are?
So it doesn't.
It doesn't, because it's a lot. So if you would. But it was never, it was a unplatted remainder. So all the wood is moved a lot over. So, yep. Yeah, it was kind of a weird one, but it's only because it was never platted before.
Too many nuances in the plan.
I know.
We can simplify this.
I would love to. Try keeping it all in your brain every time.
That's all right. One of the other names I get called. That's fine. Okay, good.
Bob. That's a compliment.
Can you be Bob? I can be Bob too.
What did Bob did?
I don't know. Whenever Brenda's in trouble, we'll just call her Bob. There we go.
No, it's Barbara.
Oh, Barbara. Barbara. There we go. Barbara.
I'm Brandon.
Soon as Brandon gets back, we'll continue.
Bruce, your computer is, you need to do something over your Adobe. I'm not going to mess with it right now. It's telling me we have to download a free trial to be able to rotate.
It took us ten years just to get him to get a new computer.
I've never seen that one. I don't use a Adobe.
I know you don't.
That's what they make bricks on.
Right.
We also send you.
Yeah. We'll deal with it later. I'm not going to start them right now.
We, if you can put us back on Amber, we will continue our meeting.
Okay.
And you may.
Okay. So the question on this one came about and we have this quite often. This is Old Kirk City Town Lots. Dustin owns all of this right here and you can see one, lots, one, two, three, four. There's some old vacated right of way in here. And this was quite a few years ago that we found some of these houses were in that vacated right of way. And then that, some of the landowners down there came together to go through the vacation process of those old town roads that don't exist. Well, this particular one, the house actually sits a little corner, lot three. And in the middle of the vacated lot, it's an older home. It's been there. And there's a garage over here, shed over here. He would like to do an addition right in here. And with that, the, the problem is, is plating is taking a long time. Surveyors, it's just out there. So he would like to get a building permit for that addition onto an existing house, which has always sat on lots one, two, three and four. Normally we require a replat. He can start that process, but he can't maybe get through the process. And right now is the building season. So the question is, is are you comfortable with me issuing a building permit based on this? And then I know Dustin had said he can replat it. It's just timing. It's just.
Yeah, you know, my lot, it consists of several small lots already, you know, it's just one more little piece. So that's kind of, I mean, that's just my thought process. But you know, if I absolutely have to replat, I will, but I'd like that building permit, you know, contingent on occupancy or something at that point. But I mean.
I would, I would make the motion for just what you said, to issue that in contingent, the occupancy on finishing the plat on there. Cause it, it definitely needs to be platted and that'll clean up a part of that mess out there, which, you know, it, it's sure a nice place to, to build and to live. And it would have been neat when it was a town, but now that it's kind of what it is, you're trying to clean that up is, is what's left. That was a motion, yes.
I'll second that motion. Yeah. Further discussion. Seeing that, all those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Opposed?
Were you fine with that?
Yeah, that's, that's all I needed. So we can issue the building permit just as is. You've already submitted everything. So I can have Jesse work on it. And then just continue to work on replating.
How many years have we for this all?
Yeah. No, that is it. That's all I need.
I mean, you guys, you got Galena and you got, there's a bunch of stuff.
We're going to wait till the back time of nine forty-five for this next one.
Um. So just so you guys know with building permits, we're having a lot more of this kind of stuff, but it's timing. It's building season now and surveyors are just, I mean, they're, they're just way out and they're overwhelmed. And so we're struggling with trying to get stuff. And I don't know. I'm okay with making that call, but at this point, I'm just bringing those all over to you guys to make that call to you, how you want me to deal with it. If that's okay, that's what we'll keep doing.
Okay.
Okay. We've just got some weird little things going on with people just not being able to fix stuff.
Good problems to have.
Yep.
Do we have to recess as commissioners and reconvene?
We could do that, I guess. Let's do that, Richard. That's a good idea.
Okay. Make that motion.
A second. Yeah, we have a motion and a second to recess as commissioners and reconvene as board of adjustment. And I will apologize. It was my fault. Last time we got a little bit of, I got a little bit ahead of myself. And we had the hearing on this prior to the stated time. So I take full responsibility for making that mistake. And that's why we're here today to kind of have a redo. And we'll wait a couple more minutes and then we'll do it.
We need to sew both. Pardon me? We still need to change the vote to recess and recon, or to, yeah, recess and.
All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Sorry. Procedural.
Yep.
That's why you're here, buddy.
Just kind of carries on its own discussion.
Yeah.
I'm going to have you.
Better words.
Just because we need to change the times and dates on it while you're here.
Sometimes you just got to keep that chairman honest. Sometimes you just gotta keep that chairman honest.
Signature commissioners, twice. I checked out the hallway, there's no one else here.
We're still waiting on another commissioner.
That's all we need to just update for you.
Thank you.
Is Eric Fine not coming today?
I don't. Uh, I didn't, I didn't hear back from him on that, so I don't know why not, but.
I didn't see him on the hallway, I'll check one more time.
Yeah, I don't, he just said thank you when he.
I know.
That was it, so I didn't know for sure.
And there was, we had a little bit more banter back and forth, but I just, uh, I, I didn't follow up with him, I was just too busy. So I don't know, I figured, you know, it's his check.
It is nine forty-five, uh, I assume that you're the gentleman. Amber, you wanna kick this off for us?
Yep.
And this is, uh, also a public hearing, we'll have the presentation and then open it up to the public.
Great, so this was a variance request, um, for a sixty by one hundred building. Um, and this building is gonna sit right next to in current fifty by one hundred building. That is on the corner of Matson Lane and then the Highway fourteen, the DOT right-of-way here. Um, we did give a variance on this fifty by one hundred building to Matson Lane, that was a little corner right in here. Um, and we issued that variance a couple of years ago. The new building is gonna sit right here, and this one is actually, he's requesting a variance from the twenty-five foot setback from the Highway fourteen A lot line, um, on that side, so it's not a county right-of-way, it's a DOT right-of-way. The DOT had no concerns with it. Uh, and then you can kind of see the tow bulk, if anybody's gone out there, he's taken a lot of the dirt and stuff out. Um, and there's some trees up here on the hillside, some trees down in here. And basically, the location of where he's dug out all the hillside already is kind of where he would like to put it, to make it in line with the other building. Um, and with this, he, there was some back and forth between him and his contractor, and the contractor ordered the building, so the building's actually sitting out there, it's just not put up yet. Um, but the, the building is for a sixty by one hundred building. So that's kind of where it's at, he's requesting that variance to be able to allow the structure in there, basically, right where it is.
Would you like adding anything to that, sir?
Uh, sure, uh, so, yeah, as Amber said, the contractor kind of, uh. Sorry?
Name and address for the record.
Oh, sure. Uh, Harley Kirwin, uh, six three seven Main Street, Deadwood, South Dakota.
Thank you.
Um, so, as Amber was saying, the contractor did order this building without approval, but, uh, it was just kind of like, uh, he's a, he's a friend of mine over the years, so to speak. And, uh, so he just thought he was doing me a favor and kind of getting things moving. Uh, so now I'm, I ended up with a building that's pretty hard to fit into this particular lot. Now, this lot does have a county road on one side, which, with a setback. The lot has another highway, uh, road on another side with a setback. Uh, the lot backs up to a drainage ditch, which has a, uh, which drains water off the hillside up, up Matson Lane. Um, huge culverts were installed and stuff years ago. Uh, and then, as Amber was saying, I removed a huge chunk of hillside to even get this building in the spot. Uh, it was about eighty thousand dollars just in dirt removal, and we got lucky enough to truck it down the road to Troy's Place above Matson Lane. Um, so the turn-in radius, if I was to push the building backwards twenty feet out of the highway commercial, would, would, uh, one, it would cause us to remove a, a roadway that we have going up to the top of the hill at services of billboard. Um, two is it would reduce a, a turn-in radius from there for deliveries. Uh, it would, it would make it rather difficult, we'd have to deliver to the one building, then, and put to the other building, just to, just to maintain turn-in radiuses, uh, with the way that the hillside lays. Um, so as far as like, meeting certain requirements by the county as, uh, difficulties with the property and stuff, I forget how you guys phrase that. Uh, special circumstances of topographic, the floodplain, acceptable narrowness, uh, silting. Uh, as far as the requirements to, um, be able to grant the variance in this situation, I, I do believe this particular piece of property meets those, it's like a one point two acre piece of land, half of the land is on the other side of Matson Lane. Uh, or not half, but a big chunk of the land's on the other side of Matson Lane, so I have a road that goes through the property, basically. Um, and it's a, it's a hillside. Um, part of the reason why I, uh, wanted to line up both buildings, is I think it makes a better sight view, uh, for everyone concerned. Trying to keep everything pretty looking, um, and organized looking. Um, the state DOT, I contacted, uh, I forget his name, the state, uh, he had no issues with this. The particular area where we're setting this building, um, if you see where that red line is, uh, where it's Highway fourteen A, it drops off to a huge ditch line right there, so we're elevated to at least the height of fourteen A, or, um, or maybe even above it, I, I think. Um, so, uh, us placing this building right where it is at, right where I'm proposing, uh, doesn't really create any issues whatsoever, um, other than if I moved it back, it's just unusable land, and, uh, it has a hillside that drops down from where we're gonna set the building. I, I, I guess those are my concerns.
Okay, it is a public hearing, time and place for a public hearing, and we will allow the public to speak for or against this. If you wish to do so, please stand, state your name and address for the record, and this is the time and place. Would anyone like to speak for or against this? Okay, no one would like to speak? All right, we'll close the public hearing and offer to the board.
Mr. Chair?
Bruce?
If I may, uh, just as a reminder, uh, S D C L eleven two sixty-nine requires the two-thirds vote, uh, to affect any variation ordinance, so keep that in mind, that's that, that's super majority, right? We've talked about it before, but if I can, I would just remind everybody that there's a two-part test. Uh, actually, it's kind of almost three parts, as you consider one of these. Uh, and, and if I can read that just quick, like, uh, whether the granting the variance is contrary to the public interest, uh, so to approve, there must be a finding that the variance would not be injurious to the neighborhood or detrimental to the public interest or welfare, so that's one. Two, there must be a finding of special conditions such as death, because of a particular feature of the property, or because of some extraordinary and exceptional situation on the property, a variance is necessary. Then also to be considered as other denial of the variance would create a peculiar and exceptional practical difficulty, or an exceptional and undue hardship, not my words.
Okay?
If you could frame your motion, whatever way it may be, in the most terms that I can help, whatever it might be.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I think you alluded to this, I went, I went out and looked at it, and there's a hill, that, that hill that goes up there, there's a trail, and, and that goes up to a billboard?
Right.
If, if the building is pushed out, if you don't get a variance, does it block that?
It would, it would cause us to have to remove that, uh, roadway, uh, and maybe have to, I, I, we, we'd have to remove the roadway if we push the building back. And, uh, there's no more space, because behind that roadway is a drainage ditch, uh, coming from up Matson Lane. Uh, so for us to push the building back, we'd have to spend a lot more money, it'd be a hardship on me to do so, to move more dirt and, uh, lose access to a billboard.
Bruce?
Looking at the, the toll of that hill, it looks pretty steep. Um, is there a concern about removing more dirt there and having that all slide down? And I'm not an engineer.
Uh, we have some retaining wall blocks that are being hauled in currently as we speak. Um, and I got some heavy equipment out there right now to remove stuff. Um, but, uh, starting today. Uh, so, yeah, it would, we, we, we do have a little bit of, uh, but we kind of tried to slope that hillside when we dug it back to the point of where we won't have too much sloping up, but we have big retaining wall blocks, so it's set in place to just kind of, um, curb some of the silting, but, previously, that hillside was up against the other building, and we didn't really have too much issue every now and then, we had a little dirt that we mixed up under the concrete pad, so. Thank you.
Mr. Flanagan?
When you came in to get the original variance on this, the hardship was moving the hill, until you built, got the variance and built the one, now you've moved the hill to ask for a second variance for the exact same reason. You can build a building in there without having to move any more dirt, you just have to make it shorter, I just, I fail to see the hardship on this. Like you say, you did, the twenty eighteen proposal was exactly the same, it's like, well, it's gonna be too much to move the side of the hill, it's gonna look weird if I have to put it in an angle, and you've, on it, you've moved the dirt now to do another one, and inconvenience or expense is not a special condition in my, in my eyes. So I, I understand the question or what you're looking to do, and I don't fault you for, for trying to get the variance, I just don't see grounds that I can vote for it.
Can I add anything to that?
Please, you can, you can certainly respond, yes, please do.
Um, so, uh, in my eyes, a hardship would be spending the tens of thousands of dollars to move dirt, and the topography of this lot here with setbacks on two sides, and a drainage ditch on the other side, and a mountain on the other side, is another reason to grant the variance. Uh, as far as making a building smaller, uh, it'd be nice if we can walk back in time. Currently, I don't have that ability to, I mean, it's a hundred thousand dollars of the steel sitting on the property already for this, uh, to make it smaller, I, I don't, I don't know what that would entail. Um, it's engineering, snow loads and everything nowadays.
Somehow you found the expense to clear out enough room to try to build a second one, and on the first one, you couldn't find enough expense to put it in the space that you had currently, or had, had at that time, so I, again, I think you're taking another bite at the apple that I, that you probably shouldn't have got on the first try, but it is what it is, that's my opinion. So I, I understand what, what your thought process is.
The first time I had a bargaining chip, I, I had a little garage structure that I was able to concede and have that removed, and that was a little bargaining chip I used on the first time with you guys. And this time, I, I guess I don't have a bargaining chip, so it's, it's a non, non-starting issue, I guess. Uh, I'm not trying to be, uh, funny with the situation, but I, but I, but I do feel that a hardship would be spending lots of money, tens of thousands of dollars, it's not something that's, uh, not a hardship. I know I already spent eighty thousand dollars moving dirt. Back in the day, when I first did this project, I wasn't as financially well off to handle the situation. Uh, nowadays, things have changed a little bit, but back then, it was a hardship for me to try to move that dirt, because it was very expensive to me back then. Eighty thousand dollars is still a shit big chunk of change, just to move this dirt, just to put a building up, because the property is how it is, how it is laid out. Uh, to move any more dirt, I view that as a hardship. I, I view spending tens of thousands of dollars as a hardship. I, I don't know if any of you guys take that lightly, but I don't.
I think you're, I think you're misconstruing what I'm saying. You can still build in there, you just can't build to the size that you want, or you need to move more dirt, is what I see. So, and I, and you can argue hardship all you want, we don't, we have a different definition.
Well, that's why.
In, in view of, if this kind of, of a variance, now spending money, yes.
That's why I'm asking for a variance.
Further discussion from the board, more questions.
Uh, so I, uh, I sympathize with your situation of, of having the building, but I, I see two ways of mitigating, uh, this situation. Either you can get a variance and, and not, and, and put it there, or, um, without the variance, you have to move more dirt and, and lose your road. Or the, the other option of mitigating this is to build a smaller building, and I still come back to what I said last time, that, that I see the central, the problem here is that it's too big of a building for a lot. And I don't think that that's, that's a hardship, um, that, that the county should, uh, identify.
Can I respond to that?
Quickly.
So to make a building smaller, it devalues the property, and it devalues the use of the property. So, right, you could make the building smaller, but then it devalues the property, and, you know, and it, and it doesn't increase the property value, it doesn't increase the tax base that it paid either. Um, so, just, just a thought.
Okay, further discussion.
Ask some question?
Bruce?
Did I see on the drawing, I didn't notice this before, is the proposed building about ten feet bigger than the existing building?
Ten feet wider.
Ten feet wider, okay.
Same length.
Okay. Further discussion or action?
Requires the four on five.
And I can't make a motion. My mind, the friend created the problem.
Pardon me?
In my mind, the friend created the problem. No. But, that. That's no bearing on us, no, no.
I would move to deny the variance, uh, based on the fact that I don't think that it, uh, addresses any exceptional or undue hardship.
Would you also add to that, that denying it, it would not create a peculiar and exceptional practical difficulty or an exceptional undue hardship?
I could add those words, yeah.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, further discussion. And I will do a roll call vote when we get to that point. Uh, no further discussion, then, uh, Ms. Brenda, uh, all of those in favor of the motion before us will say aye, and I'd like a, a roll call, please.
Flanagan?
Aye is a, aye is a no vote, aye.
That's it.
Aye.
Sleep?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have unanimous vote to deny the request. Anything further to come before I, uh, open up, uh, items from the public? I think we covered all yours, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything else, I just have these signed, but you can go ahead and do this.
All right, uh, we are at some point of our agenda here for items from the public?
We have to come out of.
Oh, motion to, to adjourn as the Board of, Board of Adjustment and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
All right, we have a motion in a second to that, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are opposed, motion carried, we are back acting as county commissioners. If anyone here would like to speak publicly, this is the time and place, I would ask again that you would please stand, state your name and address for the record. Would anyone like to address the board?
Hi, my name's Mark Rizzi, address one one four five seven Brownsville Road. Um, we bought some property out on Brownsville Road here about eleven years ago. Have a little synopsis here for each one of you.
You realize, sir, that we won't be able to take any type of action on?
Yes, yes, I understand, I, I'm here, I'm just trying to get some questions, everybody get one? This, this is for Bruce. Um, we bought this property in two thousand thirteen, and the H and S Sand and Gravel was across the road from us, and they had a small crusher, and they used to crush. And it was fine, we didn't have dust problems, we didn't have noise problems or anything like that. Here a few years ago, they started bringing in great big commercial crushers, and we had lots of dust coming up our way, I went and talked to them several times about it. They told me every time, there was nothing they could do. Um, I even went home a couple of years ago, because they had ten days left to crush, and, and I talked to the crushing operator, and he told me, he said, all we got's ten days. He says, if you can work around that, and I said, well, I'll just go back to Casper where we, our permanent home is. So I went back for ten days while we kept crushing, because the dust was so bad. Well, um, here this year, I went, I, I brought it up to them four separate times, two by text, two by face-to-face, and they keep telling me there's nothing they can do. So I called the D E N R, and they had already been there the day before, and, um, they said that they were out of compliance. So, on the crusher, so I said, what about, and, and they were also operating without a permit to crush. And that's per the D E N R. So I said, well, what about the conveyors, what about the, the fugitive dust round from the trucks? And they said, there's nothing we can do about that, that has to do with the conditional use permit. So I got ahold of the county, and I said, can I look at the conditional use permit? And sure enough, it's in there, talks about the dust and everything. And so it says that the highway superintendent is in charge of that. So I got ahold of John Bay, and we discussed some things, and my questions are, um, one other thing that, that, that concerned me was, we were coming back from town one day, and one of his, one, one of the haul trucks, the eighteen wheeler, was backing out on the Brownsville Road and almost hit us, and I don't know if it's happened to anybody else, but it happened to us. And, and I was like, there should be a fence there or something, so that they can't do those types. there should be a fence there or something so that they can't do those types of things or somebody's going to get hurt. That's my opinion. You guys can look at it however you like. But my questions are, who enforces these conditions of the conditional use permit? Cause if you go through the conditions, not many of them have been met. And like I said, I talked to John Bay and I talked to Bruce. Um, oh, Bruce, did you get one?
I'm sharing.
Oh, okay. Um, so I was, those, those are the types of questions I, I would like to get answered for. And, um, after talking with the D E N R and, and John, you guys were next.
So I think Mark, Mark has made a formal complaint. It's a planning and zoning, so he's also talked to Jeff. And Jeff will correct me if I'm wrong. I think this permit dates back originally to like 1992, 1993, that vintage, right? So even predates me. Um, I think it was put on as, and on an as needed basis in approximately 2005.
Correct.
And, and so, and I know we're not, you're not taking any action on this today, but just to kind of get the discussion going. I don't know if there's ever been any complaints um, about the operation of it as it is. Uh, John Bay is here as well. He, you know, if, if and when you're interested, he might have some comments as well. We went out and took some pictures, um, the other day. Uh, we just kind of been scrolling through some of these. Uh, I have one question if I might ask Mark this question.
Yes.
Mark, uh, we talked, you talked to the D A N R and they were, uh, in their minds, in control of the crusher, regulating the crusher. And, and they took a haul, took some remedial work with the crusher, right? And, and so have you seen any problems with the crusher since then?
He did. Absolutely. No, the crusher is fine. I have no problems with the crusher. The problems that, that we, we have now is not from the crusher itself, but from all the dust coming off the conveyors. And that's addressed in this conditional use permit. And the fugitive dust comes off the ground. And here lately, at least the last week or so, there hasn't been any, which is great because of all the rain. But before that, it was horrible. And like I said, when he was, when he, when they were using their small portable crusher, when we first bought the property, we had no issues. We had no issues at all. It was only until they started bringing in these great big crushing outfits that the dust just got, it got out of control. And then one, one other. I, you, you talked about the conditional use permit being, being issued back in the nineties. My question goes back to, why wasn't any of it enforced? Whether it was.
Obviously we didn't have any complaints, so.
Okay.
Okay. So this is comments from the public. Thank you for your input. I think the next step is it will be looked at through the planning and zoning department. If there's some things that need to be reviewed, uh, if, if, if there's validity in the concerns, which it sounds like there, there definitely could be, it will probably come back to us as a review of that condition. I mean, that's, you say, we can't make any decisions here. The next step is, is I think there's a formal complaint. So there's a process there. And then if we figure out exactly what's going on, it'll come back to us. And I'm sure you'll be notified if and when that happens.
Yeah. We have it on the agenda for the next.
No.
They haven't completed their look.
Jeff's been working on it. Bruce has talked to him. We have not had an opportunity to do our normal process.
Okay.
Um, I think it's in that process. That's where it's at right now. Um, so we need to go through our normal process. And, and I think, just honestly, just wanted to come and visit with you guys.
Yes. Does our highway superintendent want to add anything to this?
Um, the only thing I would add is after I got the phone call from Mr. Rizzi that I did go out to the site. His, one of his complaints was that the stockpile was too close to the road and he brought that to our attention. I went out, I spoke with the operator of the gravel pit. They are too close to the road. I, I informed him, he needs to move his piles. They need to be outside of the right of way. I went out yesterday. He had moved one of the two that are too close to the right of way. Um, he does need to continue and get the other removed. I also recommended some, some additional signage would not be. So we've got some, some things in process right now.
So I'm not going to say when it's going to be on the agenda because we need to finish our process, but as soon as we are through that process and we do what we need to do, then yes. And then, you know, Hall's going to have a chance to be here just like we normally do. Um, that's where we're at. But I, I don't know when that's going to be yet.
Yeah, I am going to, uh, allow Mr. Hall to speak to a couple of the things that have come up here in, in visiting. They're not taking any action.
Your name and address.
I got kind of a little presentation since I wrote down the rest.
Stuck in with because we're. Go ahead. This is your meeting.
Well, I just want to be fair to everyone.
My name is Dalton Hall. My address is 1157 Brownsville Road. Um, before I get started, I got some D A N R tests, so give everybody, that's all right. Perhaps you should give your seat there. Your, your presentation. All right, I, I can stand. It's all right.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I only brought five. Sorry.
Make sure that my name is on it. And Mark, did you get a copy, Mark?
I apologize only.
No, that's fine.
I'll make sure.
All right. So, uh, good morning, everyone. My name is Dalton Hall. I'm Dave Hall's son. I'm here on behalf of HNS Sand and Gravel out on Brownsville Road. Um, it's been brought to my attention that, uh, there's some complaints about our business by, by an individual. I'm here today to see if I can set the record straight and kind of get ahead of the curve at all possible here. Um, the complaints that I've been made aware of are, um, we're producing excessive dust. Number two is the gravel trucks are a hazard on the Brownsville Road. Um, number three is the length of time that's taken our crushers to crush this here. And then finally is our stockpile is being too close to the road. Um, first is the main complaint is dust. Um, first Mark did come to us and he talked to us and at first we, we said we were going to try to do some stuff. And I mean, at that time we were getting some rain every couple of days during the week. So I told the, the crushers, I said, if there's any way possible, just try to mix a little bit of moisture in with as, as much as you can, you know? I mean, I'll be honest, it didn't do a lot. It did little, but it didn't do a lot. Um, after that, we realized that it wasn't helping. So we asked them to do next, the next thing they could do, which would be to bring a spray tanker, water tanker with spray nozzles on it. So they put that on the cone and it completely killed the dust. There's, there's absolutely none. Um, well, not none, but very, very little. Um, so next thing, D A N R came out. Um, they tested both of the jaw and the cone crusher. And that's what these tests are. Um, on the left it'll show which one is the jaw. This one here is the jaw and that one's the crush one that has rect graves on the top. That's, that's the tester for the S D E D A N R. That one is, has the cone on it. So the allowable legal opacity, so how they tested is, it doesn't really make a lot of sense, but they've looked through it and they see the opacity of the dust, whatnot. And, and, uh, the jaw passed with flying colors. It was, it was less than five percent, even on startup. Um, the maximum allowable, they don't like to see over 15% opacity. Um, but they were on the cone, they were seeing at the very maximum, they were getting 15% when they started up and then it would, it would trickle right off. Just when you'd start up and it was rock on here, ultimately crushing. And then after that, it dropped to almost nothing. Um, the next thing I was told that, uh, Mark thought that he was going to get cancer from dust that was being created. So we, not this year, about two, three years ago, M shot came out. What's that?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. M shot came out like two, three years ago or something like that. And they don't have, give us any paperwork. They do, uh, silica sniffer test is what it's called. Um, it's either a pass and you go back from anyway, or you fail and they find the living crap out of it. So they did that test on, on three of the crushing guys that, that, that were there and all three of them combined were still below the minimum allowable for silica test, silica dust. And silica is the main, main problem for cancer causing elements and that. So, um, so ultimately I just want to say that we, we never got shut down. No entity, no body, no one came out and said, you need to shut down for an extended period of time, for a day, for an hour, nothing. We never had any problem, even since my grandpa was in there, never had a problem. I mean, I understand where his complaints are just because, I mean, he built not even half a mile from an operating gravel pit. So we're doing everything that we can.
How about the piles here? Moving loads?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yep. I'll get to it. But next thing is the, is the gravel trucks. Um, I think that about any local could probably agree that the biggest hazard on any county road in the, in the Black Hills is probably the ATV and the QTPs. But as far as gravel trucks go, if any of the locals or any of the companies have any problems, anyone at all has problems, they call us. Granted, there's not a lot that we can do, you know? I mean, as soon as the gravel truck leaves our property, ultimately we're, we, we lose all liability for, for that gravel truck. But if they're driving like a maniac or being a jerk, turning their jerk, Jake brakes on, going past somebody's house, obviously when they come back, we say, hey, man, you're representing us. Please, please be respectful. So do is everything that we can. As far as the crushing length this year goes, I mean, we were awarded, this is the first year that we were awarded a state contract or a state bid or fake job. And it's for the South Rochford Road project going to Deerfield, paving Deerfield, the Deerfield Road. And normally we do about 40,000 tons, 40, 50,000 tons a year. And that's more than enough for us and our small customers and, and little projects that's going on, that kind of thing. But with the state project, they called, required a minimum of 60,000 tons for that job. So, I mean, we're, we're inching towards that hundred thousand every day, you know? So usually what takes our crushers a month and a half to two months, it's taken more like four this year. Plus I will say they are having nothing but problems breaking, breaking down and that kind of thing. So, I mean, it's the beauty of breaking rock with metal, you know? Metal breaks too eventually. Um, but as far as I will say, I mean, like we are a small business in the company. We're trying to grow. We're doing everything that we can. Everything that we can do, we're going to try to, we're going to keep bidding projects, keep working, keep, keep going as much as we can anyway. We want to supply gravel to the county, we want to supply gravel to the state, the federal, the, uh, Forest Service and anybody, anybody. We're, we're happy to, to do that. Next, so the main thing is the piles being too close to the road. Um, John Bay and Mike Magazine did come out last Thursday and Bruce came out last Tuesday, I believe was, and we all kind of talked. And, um, John told us that, told me that the piles were too close. So we had our two inch clean pile, which you had a picture of it a minute ago. And then we had our state spec base. So our two inch clean, I got all that moved. I moved that immediately. So that's, that's our two inch clean pile right there. So that's a minimum from the center of the road. I got 33 feet is the, is the closest that is. So I, I think we're good there. If I need to move it farther, I can, not a problem. As far as the one inch base, the spec base goes, I haven't started on moving that yet. I, I rented a larger loader, front end loader to come up, help me with, with moving it. If it gets to that, I talked to the state yesterday and I asked them when they were going to start hauling that material out. So I didn't have to touch it three times, only touch it once. So, so they told me that they were going to start home this week. They were going to try to start hauling this week, but they have a, a skeleton crew right now because of rally still. So they're waiting till the end of rally, hopefully the beginning of next week. They said that they're going to have majority of their trucks back, which is 15 to 20 or 17 to 20, which is an absolute pile of trucks. But that pile will darn near all be gone when that happens. So, um, and then I will say also that this is kind of a, kind of a weird year for us just because like how the shot had to go. We tried to get everything set up down below because it's easier for the, for the dozer to push down too. It's easier for the crusher to, to access that material. So we're, we're just awful short on space. And I know that's not a, not a good reason to be encroaching on county road, but, but ultimately after this year, after this pile's all gone, the state project is done. We'll be able to set back into the pit substantially. So this will never be a problem in the future. But, okay, finally. My granddad Jerome Hall started this, this gravel pit back in the early eighties. He was a man of his word. He was a man of integrity. And I intend to operate the pit in the exact same way. If anyone has any problems or complaints about what we're doing at HNS, I encourage them to come and talk to us. Our door is always open. We will do everything in our power to get the issue or issues resolved, or at least explain our side of the situation and see if we can come to some kind of an understanding.
All right. Well, thank you. We, we've gathered up all the information here from both sides now, so we'll take it into consideration and, and, uh, vote in our future.
I just, I see one safety issue that I'll bring up. It looks to me like maybe, and I think maybe the highway superintendent has a similar thought. Uh, we probably need to fence, they probably need to fence our right of way out so that they have one way in and one way out, or however they want to handle that. But they should never have that big a open access along the county road, in my opinion, any, but nobody should.
I, I brought that up to him when we met with him, that we should designate an entrance and an exit to.
Okay. That's the only thing that what I really see is sticking out.
Dalton, um, thank you for coming. You've heard some of the discussion from Mr. Rizzi and the commissioners, right?
Yep.
Um, would you make sure before you leave that Jeff, planning and zoning, had your contact information? And we'll follow up, make some of these recommendations and also some ideas about your new signage as well. Makes sense? Then we'll try to work through that, fair enough.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else, uh, uh, would, anyone else want to speak during the public comment period at this time? Dalton? Okay, we'll close that. Uh, items from the commissioners. We need a commissioner, somebody else. Commissioner, please.
Uh, did they call you?
Amler?
Say that again?
Did they call you or about this? Were you aware or they weren't made the conditions that are on the paper?
Rizzi just filed a complaint. I haven't even had a chance to look at it. He chose to come here today without us being able to really kind of go through our process.
Yeah, we'll have to deal with that once.
Yeah.
Bruce?
I'm just going to say, Richard, I think it's been on an as needed basis since, since 2005, like we mentioned. And there's never been a complaint about anything out there as far as I know or any records. So it's all new. We're, we're.
Okay. Anything further? We should get, uh, Commissioner Sleep and I met with the forest supervisor and deputy and also the district ranger from the Spiritfish Nemo district, uh, January 31st, or July 31st, excuse me. Uh, talked about a variety of issues. We touched on, of course, timber industry, uh, OHV use. Uh, I don't know, maybe a little bit on weeds, but certainly the cooperative agency status. Uh, I don't see us being able to pursue cooperative agency status with this board supervisor. Um, having a person from the national resource committee on the ID team is a non-starter for that. And I think it's, you know, as I think about cooperative agency status, while I, I believe the county should have it, I believe that we are entitled to through federal law. Um, the key word there is cooperative. And if they're not going to be cooperative in it, there's probably no reason to pursue that. Uh, I think a better option that we talked about would be for Commissioner Sleep, do I, and I do continue to meet with the forest supervisor on a quarterly basis. Uh, through that process, hopefully we can build relationships with them. And we talked about the need to be proactive on some of these issues and, uh, projects that they're doing instead of being reactive. Uh, I think we've got some, uh, some indication that they would, uh, try to work towards that. Does that sound fair?
I agree with that. I, you're right. Bruce, if we could meet with them on their, more likely do it than they're, they go to the national resource committee.
I, I think what Commissioner Jennings was referring to is, is to update, uh, the, the, uh, cooperative agency agreement that's been in place since like 2018. You currently have a cooperative agency agreement in place for the, um, for the forest plan amendment. And I think you just did one for the, um, the old growth, old growth force, right? But the one he's referring to, it gets kind of confusing pretty fast. Is your, is your original cooperative engagement agreement? Does it make sense to everybody?
Yeah, it doesn't sound like the new one's willing. Well, it's, yeah, they're not going to want to make any changes that we suggested making. And, and, uh, the one, the, the MOU that they have offered up for, uh, the Black Hills is not acceptable to us and ours is not acceptable to them. So it's probably not going to happen.
That's a fair point that you have a draft here presenting.
They do. Uh, one thing we did talk about also, considering the roads, uh, when we took our road tour, we identified several roads that are on the secondary that we want, would like to move to a minimum maintenance. But that was going to put the landowners in a difficult position because of the about a, a year timeframe it takes to get a special use permit for the, to be able to plow snow off of the forest service roads. We did talk about the fact that they could do a temporary use permit and while they were, while the landlord was applying for improvement, uh, permit to plow snow. So, uh, we do have that opportunity. We can maybe move that forward quicker than it looked like we could have last year. We will continue to, to discuss that. Okay? Anything further, uh, from the legislature?
Those who adjourned.
I guess, uh, one, I just, uh, want to make sure that, that, uh, that Mr. Sleep and I are on the right wavelength here, that it's okay if we don't pursue, continue to pursue the cooperative agency status.
Well.
And, and work through it at the quarterly meetings.
Doesn't sound like we're going to get any more trying to pursue it. So I guess, uh, the next best option is for you two gentlemen to, uh, have your quarterly meetings.
I support that as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Fly, then you made a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. Let's stop the recording.